We'll call as council meeting Monday, March 22nd to order. Invitation given by Mayor McHannigan and I pledge allegiance by myself.
Hello, everybody. I have with Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our community, especially the young men we are recognizing tonight. Father, we ask your guidance on us as we conduct the business of our city. May all of our actions be acceptable to you. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phillips, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Raffel.
Here.
Ms. Nagat Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Mike Ashburn.
Here.
Mr. Barry Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Richard Beaton.
Here.
We'll move to adoption of the agenda. Everyone have a chance to look at our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt this agenda? I make the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No old business, so we'll move straight into the new business. First thing tonight is to... First thing we'll do is approve of my previous minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes? I make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, no old business, so we're moving into new business. First thing is to present certificate of recognition to the Scottsboro High School basketball team. Guys, if y'all come up front. This is a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the city council. This is presented to the Scottsboro High School basketball team in recognition for your 2021 regular season and state final four finish dated 22nd day of March of 2021. Guys, I just want to tell y'all what a joy it was watching me this year. I told many of the people, you know, that they asked me about this team. I watch a lot of basketball. And I said, you know, any day, any one of y'all could pick over us. This is the true team, and I appreciate watching it. Enjoyed it. Thank y'all. I'll give you a few minutes of your welcome to stay, if not, understand. All right, we'll move to number two. We'll move to our public hearing. This is time to place for a public hearing for the project development and funding and the cooperative agreement between D.R. Scottsboro LLC and the City of Scottsboro, Alabama for a public shopping center project site in an amount not to exceed $3,685,500. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, sir.
Will you please kind of explain this to us?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council members, good evening. This is a project development agreement that grants an economic incentive of $3,685,500. It's payable over the first to occur of seven years for payment of rebate of sales taxes in the amount of $3,685,500. The agreement also contemplates a validation of the warrant that would be issued for the three million to the developer and which we would plan on filing shortly if the council is up and line to adopt the ordinance. I wanted to mention to you that the council will... The rebate of the taxes is only 65% of your 3% tax. So the council will still get $270,000 in sales taxes based on a sales projection of $20 million from the new development. And after seven years, that would increase by $500,000. You'll also obtain ad lorm tax annually at about $81,000 based on an $18 million after construction cost and as well as a business licenses for $14,000 a year and whatever the permit fees are for the construction. So happy to answer any questions.
Any members of council have any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Hearing none, any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes. My name's Gary Morgan. I'm a local blogger in the borough, arclife.blogspot.com. There's... Who do you represent, sir?
I represent D.R. Scottsboro LLC, and they're the developer.
Now, is that tied into South Pace Properties?
No, it isn't. Mr. White here can describe to you the entity.
I am kind of curious about the entities because there seems to be a circuitous rooting in where does the tax money go exactly? Is it going... I understand it's going to go to D.R. Properties, but as you pull up the Secretary of State filings, there's D.R. Properties listing is in Clearwater, Florida with South Pace Properties, which is connected to White Development and connected to other entities. So this is why I'm saying there's circuitous rooting there, and I'm looking to understand that.
Mr. White, I'm gonna call on you in a minute, and I'll let him answer that when it's his turn.
Well, this is... I mean, this is important. I think it's an important question, Mr. President. And I understand you've stated, and I've talked to the attorney and you beforehand, that you're limiting my time to five minutes, but this is an important issue because we're talking about Scottsboro, a taxpayer, some money that's going to this organization, and hey, I like public supermarket. If this is what's going to come here, I'm a person that wants to understand fully of what's going on so I can write truthfully and fully about what is going on.
Sure, that's not a problem, and when Mr. White comes up, he'll explain that to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna call on Mr. White, and you can ask him then. You have your five minutes with him.
Thank you, sir.
But do you have any questions, Mr. Rosenberg?
Do you represent D.R. Scottsboro?
Correct.
So D.R. Scottsboro, does this go against my total five minutes time, Mr. President?
You have five minutes with him and five minutes with Mr. White.
Thank you, sir. So, five... D.R. Scottsboro, exactly what is the breakdown with D.R. Scottsboro and the relationship with all the other organizations?
Well, that's the question that Mr. White's gonna answer for you.
The money that's going, the tax abatement, does that go to D.R. Scottsboro, or does it go to the organization that is White Development?
No, it will be rebated to the LLC, D.R.
Which is D.R. Scottsboro?
Right.
And you are not connected to White Development?
Well, it is, and you'll get the explanation for that shortly.
Okay, thank you.
White's a Florida company, D.R.'s in Alabama company, we have the tax in Alabama, we have down in Alabama.
So, South Pace, are you associated with South Pace?
No, sir.
Properties?
No, sir.
Which is listed as the agent of D.R. Scottsboro LLC. South Pace Properties is listed with Secretary of State as the agent of Scottsboro LLC, D.R. Scottsboro LLC, so...
They're a real estate company.
Yes, sir. And the...
So they're involved in the tenants.
Okay. So the tenants are gonna pay the property development, the taxes, or the city of Scottsboro is gonna rebate the taxes directly to you, which is gonna go down to White Development?
The tenants will collect the sales taxes in the operation of their business and pay it to the city. And the city will, on a quarterly basis, rebate it to D.R. Scottsboro LLC.
Okay. Which is part of White... Your address is 8 Keene Boulevard in Clearwater, Florida, which is same address as White Development?
No, I'm from Birmingham.
You're from Birmingham?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan, he's an attorney for the script.
Yes, sir, I understand that, but I pulled up the sec... I think the listings, the Secretary of State.
And I think Mr. White can explain that more to you.
Okay.
He's an attorney, so you have a question for their attorney.
Sure, I understand, but it's what I'm trying to understand is there's a circuitous rooting of all the corporations involved here, and I'm trying to understand that rooting of the different corporations. D.R. Scottsboro with the Secretary of State of Alabama is listed as Keene Boulevard in Clearwater, Florida, with South Pace Properties listed as the agent. When you pull up South Pace Properties, that is also goes back to White Development. So it's why I'm trying to understand where is this money going? Is it going to the developer? Sure, I got that. And that's gonna help you develop the property right there, wherever grocery store goes in there, right?
Correct.
Or whatever, but I'm still trying to understand where White Development comes in since it's not a registered agent within the state of Alabama. You are the registered agent. South Pace Properties is a registered agent. So am I making sense here or not? I mean, I'm just trying to understand it's a circuitous rooting, so...
Hi, Mr. Morgan, we're gonna... It's been the five minutes. We're gonna move on to Mr. White, and then you have your time.
Oh, thank you.
He could explain that.
And anybody else in the public have any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Mr. White, would you come and add anything to this?
Yeah, certainly. Try to clarify, and you're right, it is a fairly confusing... White Development Company is a Florida corporation, I own 100% of it. We came up and put the property under contract, but we can't get a loan as a development company. So, once the project becomes real, which is just recently thanks to the city of Scottsboro, we had reserved an LLC that could operate in Alabama because there's taxes and whatnot. If there's any profit made in Alabama, you have to pay taxes on it. White doesn't really operate in Alabama other than putting the property under contract. So each Publix that we've done, there's been about 15 or 20 of them, there's a group, different group of ownerships in each LLC. Sometimes we need to bring in money, so someone might come in that we've never worked with before and own a certain percentage of it. The LLC borrows the money. Yep, the tax money that we're borrowing is going to be fully, more or less paid through to the bank on the loan to do the property. We'll be borrowing against it so that we can do the property, and then we make quarterly payments just like the city makes to us, to the bank. So that's how, if that helps explain it any, we're just trying to... The reason the different entities, besides the fact that White doesn't want to be a... doesn't own land or anything, is to satisfy the various Alabama state's requirements for operating within the state, so we have to create the LLC for that.
Anything else, Mr. White, you want to add?
I think, I hope I explained it fairly clear.
No, that's good. Do I have anybody on the council has any questions for Mr. White? All right, now, do I have anybody in the public has any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And believe me, I don't have any problems with the development.
The agent, the reason to do, create the LLC, because you know the address isn't in Alabama, you need an agent. It could be an attorney or anyone. We work with South Pace on projects we do in Alabama. They do our leasing and management. So they... That's why South Pace is involved. They're just a broker in the project, that's all they really are. They're giving us the courtesy of being our agent here in Alabama so the LLC can be created for the, what I understand, the rules and regulations of Alabama to be.
Sure.
That explains that the South Pace relationship, they're just a broker, but they're also acting as an agent, as a piece of paper.
Thank you, sir. Now, Plasky, the folks at Plasky, I think it's the ex-Plasky Bank, Plasky Bank Corporation owns, currently owns the property. When do you see that you're going to close on that property?
We've been under contract with them for a while. We're gonna close within the next two months.
Okay.
We're fine, thanks to, well, we have to get this done to close, so this is gonna take a month or so, and until this is done, we can't close. But right within 10 days after this is done, then that property will be in the name of D.R. Scottsboro LLC, which I'll control. I'm a controlling member of that LLC also.
Thank you, sir. Now, a lot of people don't come forward and ask questions like this, you know, but I'm gonna ask questions.
Yeah, not at all.
Because I'm trying to understand what the total... I'm a citizen of Scottsboro, so I'm saying, where is my tax money going? And I got it. I understand the public purpose. It will create jobs, but I want to understand when the prop... Since the property at this time is not closed on, it almost, to this old country boy, it almost seems like the horse is being put behind the cart, or the cart's being put before the horse.
We could close the property until we sign a lease with Publix, and we have also not signed a lease with Publix yet. We're a couple of weeks away from that. So in addition, you know, banks are what drives the closing. We're paying the bank, the Plasky Bank, every month now a fair amount of money to get extensions because it's taken longer than we wanted it to to get the project put together properly. So we have a lot of non-refundable money up at the bank, and we intend to close it soon as Publix leases sign and as soon as the city helps us out on this...
As soon as the validation proceeding is signed.
Yes, sir. So will the city of Scottsboro proceed with this procedure before the closing of the property? Is this something that is normally done? Is this something that is a general rule that... But because the property is not closed on as of yet.
It'll be a condition, we won't pay...
If you don't do the validation first, you can't close it. So the validation proceeding has to be filed, there has to be a hearing, and then there's a 14-day delay for appeals. At that point, then the company is in a position to be able to close.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I just can't re-explain, Mr. Morgan, how the tax rebate works.
On this one, I count toward Mr. Morgan's time, but...
Thank you.
...money will be paid to this LLC until the shopping center gets built and stores there start collecting sales tax.
Right. But the main question is, though, the PDFCA, the Project Funding and Cooperation Agreement, is this gonna be signed? I mean, y'all are voting on this tonight, before the property is closed. Y'all are gonna do this before the property... Is this incumbent on the deal being completed that the city council vote on this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So you cannot, White Development and, or actually, Scotts... D.R. Scottsboro LLC probably cannot get funding until the city council votes on this tax, I guess, call it tax abatement or whatever.
Then you have to be able to present the PDFCA to the court.
Sure.
And it has to be signed. And the PDFCA does not become effective until after the validation proceeding is done. And so that is the normal course for these projects all over the state.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate the time. I'm, like I said, as a writer and a blogger and an old guy here in the community, I'm trying to understand what, exactly what is going on, and that's it.
Personally, me personally, I'd love to talk to you, get you behind this, make you understand what a great thing that this council is doing by approving this tonight, and because, you know, I can tell you that this shopping center is gonna be excellent for the town. Publix is an excellent grocer. They wouldn't be able to come here without this help. We intend to do a real high-quality project, and I'd be happy to spend any time you want to talk to you about what we intend to do and why it's gonna be such a, I think, an impact on the community. And I thank you guys very, very much for everything you've done to get us over the bridge. We've been six years on this, and...
No, thank you, I appreciate it. And hey, I'm actually for you. This is six acres of property down there, I believe, right?
Seventeen.
Pardon?
Seventeen.
Seventeen acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
If anyone else in the public got a question, Mr. White?
Congratulations on the basketball team, too. That was a good reading to be here. I play ball with my seniors twice a week down in Florida and Nashville, so...
This will conclude our public hearing. Do I have any members of the public have any comments on this? We'll move on to number three. Consider ordinance 617, approval of the project development funding and cooperative agreement between D.R. Scottsboro LLC and the City of Scottsboro, Alabama for a public shopping center project site in an amount not to exceed $3,685,500. First, I'm gonna need a motion to set the rules aside. Do I have a motion to set the rules aside on this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Phillips, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Beaton?
Yes.
With the rules set aside, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 617?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, Ms. Phillips, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Beaton?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Number four, consider ordinance 618, amend employee handbook. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 618?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes. Number five, consider ordinance 619, amend the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 619?
Mr. President, I'd like to table this amendment of the zoning ordinance to our next work session. These are some items that's brought to my attention as late as today, and I think we... It would be good if we had the time to go through one more work session and look at these issues.
I have a motion on the floor to table this to the next work session and go over again. Do I have a second?
I second.
Do I have any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance will move to the next work session. Number six, consider resolution 2021-0305, award the contract mowing bid. Ms. Phillips, can you go over that?
We were saving three bids for the mowing service. The lowest bid was right away services at $45,800 per year, so it's recommended that the bid be awarded to right away services.
Do I have a motion to approve the mowing bid and right away service?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. We'll consider the... Number seven, consider resolution 2021-0306, surplus fire department property. Ms. Phillips, can you go over that?
The fire department has three mowers that they would like to surplus and place on gov deals, and any money received from the sales shall be placed back into their capital outlet account.
Do I have a motion to approve the surplus of the fire department property?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? The only discussion I have, you know, I was really excited when I heard you had some extra mowers, now I realize they're residential and wore out. I was hoping to move those around, but all right. No one else has any discussion, then we'll vote on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, consider budget amendment for the software update from the vehicle maintenance department. We've went over this a few times. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider budget amendment from excess county tax for the Heritage Center property. This is an amount of $63,282.78. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, approve the payment of the KPS invoice number 11 for the Heritage Center. That's the amount of $2,134.34 that'd be our part of it. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, approve the recreation director job description. Everyone should have a chance to look over this job description. Do I have a motion to approve this job description?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, approve agreement from Volker Inc. for professional service for US 72 drainage row. $39,718. Let's engineer a fee for this. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, announce commercial development board appointments. Ms. Phillips?
We have three vacancies and we had three applicants. Bishop Dawson applied for reappointment, and then Carrie Bradford and Mark Chapman.
We have three vacancies and three names, so I don't see any reason to separate these. We could, I could get a motion to approve all of them. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Here and none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the meeting. We'll move to delegations. Dr. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, President's lady, to the council, and to everybody that's here, I stand before you as a citizen of the resident of Scottsboro, Alabama. And as a young minister, I was told to get up, speak up, and shut up. So, I'll just go ahead and let you know my concerns. Um, this is a big week for Scottsboro. Mr. Wyatt and those individuals have left. This is a big week for Scottsboro as we celebrate the ninetieth anniversary of the Scottsboro Boys', uh, uh, trial, as well as Big Bass tournament is coming this week. So, this is, this is a big week. But after, after reading this article in the Jackson Sentinel, Sentinel, and it indicates that some of the events that's going to take place this week, starting with the Tiddly Plague dedication of the new Scottsboro Boys' mural, and speaker includes mural artist Don Howard, 126 East Peachtree Street. Well, when I was at the church yesterday, I said, "Well, where is 126 East Peachtree Street?" And it's the Lackey Building, I guess, the, behind the Lackey Building, or that sign. So, um, I wanted to ask Mr. Mural, uh, Mr. Howard, uh, some questions because I have some concerns. My wife and I ran up to church and went and looked, and one of the things that we noticed on this beautiful, and I don't know if you guys have seen it yet, but on this beautiful colored portrait, or portrait of a mural, it's a beautiful colorful picture, but I didn't see any people of color on it. And so, I called, I talked, I talked with Rick Roden to try to contact Mr. Howard, who contacted someone else, and eventually I got the information, contacted him, and then I went on the internet. It was time to get on the internet. I know about five minutes and time. But my concern is this, and I wanted to, first, if I had talked with him, I was able to talk with his wife. His wife called me back at, uh, one, one o'clock. So, Mr. Ashburn, this, this is happening fast, you know, like, uh, right on, right on the cusp. And so, my, my question was, was to be to him, thanks for the time and service that he's done. Obviously, it took a lot of time to do this. Was this donated or commissioned? And his wife told me that it had been commissioned or signed by the city council. I didn't know that. Um, I don't know if it was you guys or the previous.
This would be through Main Street.
Through Main Street?
Yeah, the city council didn't have anything.
So, it would be through Main Street, okay? I'm like, Mr. Morgan there. I want to know where to find, you know, where. So, Main Street. And so, as I looked, and Kim and I looked, we said, "Well, where are there any black people in this, in this?" And, and my question was, is this mural depicting the nineteen, the spring of 1931, or is it depicting the summer of 2020? I, I just really, really didn't know because I really didn't see any, any people of color, with the exception of nine African-Americans, uh, painted up high at top. And then, there's a, a picture down in the left-hand corner of the boys getting off the train. And as I looked, I was wondering, what does unified fine mean? Can anybody tell me? Unified fine? It's, it's, it's printed right down at the bottom.
Go ahead.
Uh, so basically, the word fine is in our downtown logo, and we wanted to incorporate all of the murals in the downtown, the word fine. And so, we were telling this to Mr. Howard, and he had suggested that we use that as a way to incorporate the word fine, which is in our downtown tagline, into that mural.
Okay. Well, I guess that answers that question. But my, my original question was, where are all the people of color in a colorful picture like this? So, his wife sent me this, and I was able, and I said, "Well, well," and she said, "Well, there's one there, and, and if you look, there's one there, and then there's one of..." I said, "Okay." So, my question still, is this, I think, Mr. Mayor, you were, you were at the, uh, at the meeting in, 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 uh, the summer. Uh, you know, I, I can't explain a, a, a couple things that happened ninety years ago, but this is our watch right now. You know, if I see in here, I, I think it's about five black people in here, uh, right now, maybe four or five. I don't, I don't know. But Annette and David breakfasted an excellent hour on the, um, on the, uh, Jackson County Historical Society. And one of the things on page thirty-eight of a forty-four-page article, it says, and this is related to the Scottsboro Boys' historical marker, uh, Mr., Mr. Kennerman, I just put a check behind it. Your history types have to get this fixed. And he told them, if you don't, someone else will come in and fix it for you. So, I was just wondering, since the scaffold was still there on the side of the mural, was the picture, was the project completed? And his wife indicated to me that it was completed. But I was just wondering if the factual and the accuracy of the painting, uh, was appropriate. And I was asking if there were any adjustments forthcoming, and she, she said, uh, basically, it was done. And I was just thinking, with the exception of the Lackey, uh, the Lackey logo, which was on one t-shirt, I guess that's in, uh, using this Lackey's building or something like that, I'm not sure. But it just didn't seem accurate. It just didn't seem fair. It just didn't seem right. And that was my concern. That was my biggest concern. Uh, was it, was it accurate? Now, I know there's an artist rendition. This is how he says, and I don't know if he was working on parameters, what to put in it, what not to put in it, or what to say, what not to say. Because I do see some signs here that says something like, "United we stand." Well, well, who is it to stand? Because I, I, I really didn't. And when the lady pointed out, she said, "If you look real close..." I'm thinking, do I have to get a magnifying glass to look and see? People of color, people that represents this, this city? Or she went out outside force. Now, I, I'm like Gary Morgan and the rest of you. I'm glad the public to the rest of them are coming to town. That's, that's a wonderful thing. And so, that was my concern. And, and if it wasn't through the city council, but it was through Main Street?
Main Street, yeah.
Main Street, then I guess that would explain some of it. But still, the other thing is that, uh, the, 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 we, we have not been, and this probably doesn't have anything, and it doesn't have anything to do with, with the city council at this point in time. And I learned something today, Ms. Ashburn. I learned that there's a Jackson County Out of Bound magazine that was complimentary of the, um, Chamber of Commerce, and then there's a Jackson, then there's a Jackson magazine, but that, that comes from the Daily Sentinel, I mean, the, the Jackson Sentinel. Very similar, very, and it was pointed out to me. Because my concern is this. In December, you had Mr. Copenhagen, everybody likes Captain G, that was mentioned. You did have an article, you did have a magazine coming out in January, but for Black History Month, you have Tousles Sapiens, Black History Month. And so, my wife and I took it upon ourselves to write about, and then for month of, uh, I guess this is March, I don't know, March, then you have Dr. Reyes. But for, for Black History Month, you had Tousles. Now, I like to eat a Tousles, but I'm just thinking there ought to be some kind of, some kind of recognition. And I told your, your, your Mr., Mr. Duane Patterson, I says, you know, "If I have to reserve early in the year to get somebody," it don't have to be me, please, it don't have to be me. Doesn't have to be anybody that I know, but some person of color to represent our city, to represent what's going on. One of the things that, that got my attention with this, um, with this, uh, Jackson County, Alabama, was that there were a couple of African-American business people. One was the Dance Studio. I was glad to see that. That was before, and there was another one was a barbecue, barbecue restaurant that's, uh, that's opening up, and I was glad to see that. There, there have been some inadequacies. There have been some disinformation. Um, as a concerned citizen and as a original member and co-founder of the Scottsboro Boys' Museum and Cultural Center, I, I just had some concerns that when I pass by this mural, I don't want to hold my breath, I turn my head, I feel a sullenness in my stomach because it's not right. We know that things can be changed, and we know that things have taken time to change, and I just want to be a part of the change. I don't want anybody to look back ninety years from now. I don't want anybody to look back forty years from now, or forty years from now, or ninety years from now, and say, "Why, why didn't somebody say something about it?" So, I want to go on record as saying something about it. Can I say something about it? Well, as being an original member and co-founder, of the four, of the four co-founders of the Scottsboro Boys' Museum and Cultural Center, three of them are in this room right now. There's my wife, there's Gary Morgan, and myself. And so, as a member, original member of the Scottsboro Boys' Cultural Center, and how, how, why, why, how can I say that? Because I was just handed this information to, to verify that my name is the signature on the post office box, but the United, and it's recognized by the United States Post Office as being a founding member or somebody in the Florida, or somebody with some control. I don't know if I'm finishing up right now. But this has been a part of me for a long, I haven't said, well, I said anything now. Well, Ms. Washington, I'm not going to say anything negative about, about the dead. But Ms. Washington is not here, and I, and probably if she was here, it wouldn't come to my attention. It didn't come to my attention until somebody brought it to my attention. Much like, much like, people from across the United States have contacted me and says, "What kind of mural is that you got?" When it doesn't show any, any people of color. It's a very colorful.
Kenny, when, when is the day the artist is coming over?
Uh, it's going to be Thursday, but since it's raining, we're doing it on Friday instead.
Well, Mr. Spears, I think that'd be a great question for you to have with him on that day.
Okay. I talked to this wife, and she brought to my attention that it's only storm and rain, and on Thursday. I thought, I hadn't lived that far down the road. I hadn't lived that far down the road. But just in closing, just, just to reiterate, being a co-founder, uh, I, I have a resume here, and on all my resumes, when it has activities and things of honors and activities, things that I list in my resume, it's co-founder of the Scottsboro Boys' Museum and Cultural Center. I have a letter written to Mr. S, Mr. Sandman, uh, what's his first name? Sandman, Mr. Sandman, yeah.
Jerry Sandman, Dr. Spears. We're going to have to move on.
Okay. Well,
About five minutes, turn to twenty.
There's some lessons right here, and I just want to, and some exact summaries and things like that. So, I just want to get it right, and that's all. Let's get it right. We know that ninety years ago, things were not done right. So, let's get it right. Okay? I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good thing.
Okay.
No other delegations? Mayor, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, the only thing I would add is, of course, I congratulate on our basketball team. The blighted structures, um, I think I mentioned previously that we were approved for five additional, and they've been working this week. I know the weather's impacting them some, but they were working this week. Uh, in fact, they started, they'll all still building up on North Houston, and they'll finish hopefully those jobs this week. Thank you.
Depending on weather.
Okay. And once they are through, we'll go back and level the spaces and install the grass. But I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Dahl?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Ashburn?
Just want to remind everybody that the Big Bass Flash is this weekend. It's one of the bigger bass tournaments around. And before the pandemic, you, every hotel around the town was filled up. So, if you want to go out, watch some of the festivities down there, there'd be a Bible this weekend. And one other thing, too, keep, uh, keep check with coronavirus. It's still out there. Friend of mine got put on respirator last night. So, it, it's still out there. Take, still take precautions. Thank you all.
Mr. Stewart?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you all for coming.
I've just got a little, I'll keep it here. Um, next Monday is the fifth Monday, so we want to have a meeting. And I want to remind everyone, when we come back for our next meeting, April fifth, it'll be at the new time, five o'clock. So, we'll have a work session on April fifth and a council meeting on April twelve. Also, a reminder, April second for the city is a good Friday, so that'll be a holiday. City Hall will be closed next Friday for that. And saying that, I have nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We adjourn.
Since you adjourned, I just want to remind y'all who you work for. You work for the people. The time of five minutes limitations, each one of y'all elected by the people of Scottsboro, Alabama. Whether you like it or not, whether you like what I got to say, that is the fact. You didn't give me over five, but I'm just reminding, it seems to me that you need a reminder about who you work for, and that is the people of Scottsboro, Alabama. I have no problem standing up and telling you what I think, as y'all well know. And I'm just telling you right now that the people is who you work for. I'm one of those people. And take it how you want it. That is what it is. Thank you, sir.